At this time, we call the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Wilson County Planning Commission into order. Anyone wishing to give testimony before this board today, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand. I hereby affirm the testimony I give today to be the whole truth, so help me God, say I do. Thank you. We need to approve the minutes from the January nineteenth meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion from Mr. Ash to approve, second by Mr. Jewell. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion will carry. Tom, we will start with the oil vision for the site plan for the Global Vision Baptist Church, Bible Church, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Staff, per agreement with the church, legal representation and engineering representation are going to request that you defer this for one additional month. They, we've had conversation with them this week, and the engineer said that they hope to submit something to us early next week, right around our submittal deadline. That should give us adequate time to review any corrections they've made to try to address the comments that we, that us and stormwater engineering had.
Okay.
On the, on the document. But they've needed some, per a conversation we had in late December with them, they, after going through all the comments and everything, they, they felt that they needed a little additional time to get that correctly addressed and give us time to review it.
In your opinion, is that going to be the final deferral we give on this?
Yeah, that, we got confirmation on Tuesday that that's their intent to meet that, give us that period where we've got adequate time to review it in March to meet kind of a submittal deadline and give us adequate time, and I think that's their intent is to have it heard in March. I can't, beyond that, I can make no guarantee.
I understand, but that's the intent, to be the final deferral.
So, Tom, does that take care of their other issues, was like fire marshals?
No, sir. No, sir. That, that falls outside of our jurisdiction.
But would we approve that without having clarification on that?
That is a conversation that y'all probably need to have, and county attorney may want to weigh in on that.
Well, I'm just sitting here thinking, John said, let's just find the referral. That'll be up to y'all, of course, whether you're giving another one or not. We don't have any indication they're going to request another one, but there does seem to be a lot of moving parts right now, a lot of which is not under our jurisdiction.
With the state agencies.
So, it'd be hard to say. This was something that when we met in December, we, we discussed going to February, and they, they told us that, what's his name, Alejandro?
Alejandro Mahica.
Said, I would probably need more time. He was writing furiously, seemed to be interested in getting done what we needed to get into the rest side. This is where you are, whether or not they'll ask for another, I can't say. They have no indication of that.
Thank you, sir. We have anyone here, I'm sorry, Tom, I didn't mean to talk over.
As to whether or not y'all should or, or can consider outside issues regarding state agencies, that, that would be a discussion we probably need to have with county attorney.
Fair enough. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Any further questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to defer.
To the March meeting?
Yes.
Do you know the date on that, Tom?
It's the fourth Friday this week, next month.
Fourth?
Yeah. The cause is the Mark of the Calipso.
Do you know the date on there?
Yes, sir.
Second, I believe.
Yeah, later. And March twenty-second.
Okay. We have a motion.
Because it's my birthday.
We have a motion to defer to the March twenty-second meeting, and a second for Mr. Thompson. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion will carry. Now ready for new business, Tom? The amendment to the Wilson County zoning ordinance?
Yes, we do have an amendment to the Wilson County zoning ordinance, and this is just for informational purposes. Oh, actually, this is a, this is not for informational purposes, I apologize, I skipped down one. This is a, an amendment to our flood damage ordinance. We are called from time to time to readon panels for the section of our flood zone ordinance, or flood zone regulations that are in our zoning ordinance. If you look at the front of the floodplain zoning resolution, we have to adopt the panels that are on the, the FEMA flood panels that adopt effectively floodplains.
Mm-hmm.
And then enforce the ordinance. And as such, some of the panels have changed or been revised by FEMA, and they're asking us to adopt the revisions, and that's really the only change is what's proposed in this amendment. So, they're going from a suffix, not a prefix, but a suffix, like there might be a panel D now, some of the panels are now panel E. Whatever the flood panel number is, dash one forty-seven D, they'd now be like dash one forty-seven E.
Do we?
And they've made, they've made revision, these revisions largely seem to incorporate letters of map amendments that have been done prior to the adoption we made last year of the new Stone River watershed, as well as maybe a couple of other smaller, minor letters of map amendment panels that have occurred in the interim.
Do you have a map showing what is being taken out or added to a floodplain?
I can produce one, but, but it would take me some time. It's, it's mostly just, again, revising to where we are in keeping with what FEMA has re-adopted or revised.
So, there's a hundred, about a hundred different panels here, I guess?
We have to adopt all the panels that are in Wilson County, again.
So, if you saw all this paperwork, it'd be voluminous, under each panel? Each panel has rules, regulations?
Each panel is a grid of the county.
It's top, it's a physical area, it's a map.
It's a map grid.
Yeah, it's a map grid.
All right, now, Tom, what this means is, as they modify, if you live in a certain plat, we all live in some plat.
Right.
If you live in a plat and they make adjustments, that can affect, that will, will affect your insurance rating, won't it?
Yes, sir, but in this case, unlike what we adopted last spring, where they were physically modifying floodplain, this time, these amendments all appear to be associated with incorporation of letters of map amendments, where people have applied because they think something's wrong, or maybe a development has occurred, and they, they've revised it in relation to a certain development. There's not, they're not, they're not.
Just changes based on additional study?
Yeah, additional study and additional data. There's not, it's not like wholesale change where all of a sudden, John Jewell, if you did nothing to your property, for instance, unlike last year's panel adoption, if you've done nothing to your property, and you were not in the floodplain with the last set of panels, you're likely not in the floodplain in this set of panels.
So, they can change yours, they can change theirs, they can't make it less restrictive, they have to make it more restrictive, and if they make it more restrictive, it's automatically adopted by this resolution?
The regulations that, that are associated with floodplain administration are not changing with this amendment.
So, what does section, what does section four, what does section four mean, where it says conflicts with other, other resolutions?
I think that's just boilerplate language, in case there was an inadvertent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of standard language, most everybody puts in there, if there's a conflict in the most recent, you'll say either the most recent, or I think that one says the most restrictive.
Most, that's why I asked that, it says the most restrictive, in the case of fire.
But our, our floodplain enforcement language in our zoning ordinance is not changing, we're just adopting the panels that FEMA has updated.
But if I understand correctly?
Yes.
No parcels are being added that weren't self-induced by the owners? Is that what you're telling me?
That's what I'm telling you.
So, this is?
That's my understanding of this amendment.
This is housekeeping, for lack of a better term?
Yes. And frankly, it's mandated, regardless of whether, like last year, we, it did adopt new floodplain maps where they had done additional study, and actually did add and take away people from the floodplain.
Yeah.
But regardless, if we want to stay in the National Flood Insurance Program and have our homeowners eligible for disaster aid in the case of flood or tornado, we have to adopt this.
So, two years ago, the Corps came in, and we used Frank Creek, for example, and they resurveyed.
Yes.
And set the stakes at a different floodplain, more.
And they went through all.
Is that in this, you think?
They, they went through a, a public process for the Stone River watershed two years ago, hypothetically. Actually, it was over the course of about five years because of COVID, and they did this, they did a study, they had public hearings, they had public advertisement of the, of the amendment, they had public input periods, and then they had advertisements that they're about to adopt it, and they, and then they subsequently adopted it and had us adopt revised regulations to adopt those new panels. This one, they're asking us to adopt new panels again, but in reading through the language that we've received in our office, it, it has to do with letters of map amendment they're incorporating into the, into the original documents, that someone else, some private entity had submitted with additional data, and FEMA has accepted and approved.
But FEMA is not expanding arbitrarily, expanding, or the county is not arbitrarily expanding, anything that's added in these panels was something that was brought to them?
Yes.
That, that's my question.
Yes.
That arbitrary angles is what he concerned me.
But even, even the, what you might call, if you will, the arbitrary angle, would have been last year's panels that were adopted, and they were not arbitrary, they were the result of a study that FEMA.
Well, I, I, that was poor, poor choice of words on my part, I apologize for that. People aren't going to be, this is not going to stick people in the floodplain that they didn't have any idea anything was coming. That's my question.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Okay. And we have to, honestly, we have to adopt this one way or the other, even if it
Yes, sir.
means a modification, we would still have to adopt some phase of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
But, but now, you know, really, a floodplain is going to vary a little bit. If they make studies every, say, every ten years, weather could make a floodplain vary, couldn't it? Long-term weather could.
Well, natural, natural floodplanes, while the FEMA floodpanels try to address or, or reflect natural floodplanes, there, there are areas, May two thousand and ten flood, over fifty percent of our flood damage occurred outside of regulatory floodplain, and that's partially because it was a, it was a, an intensity and duration storm that exceeded what is technically the one percent chance of occurrence in any given day at that intensity and, and amount of rain in a twenty-four hour period, is what people typically refer to as the hundred-year storm. Whatever you want to call it, due to trends, or natural cycles, or, or man-made, whatever, we're having, we're having more intense, more frequent storms that might meet or exceed what's been referred to as a hundred-year storm.
Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
We have a.
Second. We have a motion for Mr. Thompson to approve, a second by Mr. Jewell. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion will carry.
Chairman, may I ask a common question?
Yes, sir.
Do you want this resolution back to this month or March?
I've got to do a public hearing, so probably March. The other piece of information in relation to FEMA that I'll just announce, we're your floodplain administrators in the planning office, Christopher and I are certified floodplain managers, and we work through a program with FEMA called Community Rating System, and we received word that the communities we administer, which is that Wilson County and Watertown, received a rating increase, which is a positive. They, they went from a level nine rating to a level eight, and this works similar to the way ISO does for fire rating, for homeowners' insurance, for, for flood policies in the county, whether or not you're in a floodplain, if you have a flood policy, we were eligible on level nine for roughly a five percent, our homeowners that have flood policies were eligible for a five percent discount in flood insurance rates. Due to the work that we've been doing to try to stay astride and, and with FEMA in terms of administering our, our floodplain regulations effectively, we are now at level eight, and they should be eligible for up to a ten percent flood discount if they have a flood insurance policy. And every, every homeowner in Wilson County, whether or not they're in our jurisdiction, is eligible for flood insurance unless they've been formally kicked out of the program because of non-compliance and, and willing non-compliance. But to my knowledge, I don't have any of those, so I just put, put that out there as well, is that a lot of times homeowners' insurance will not cover flood damage, whereas flood insurance will, and if you're outside of a regulatory floodplain, you get what's called a preferred rate, and so while it is still money that I know is in short supply for most everybody, it should be at a reasonable rate to protect you for, from floods, if you wish to have flood insurance.
Thank you. Now, we've got the rezoning request that went to the city of Mount Juliet, if I understand correctly, Tom?
Yes, that, that is an informational item. The city of Mount Juliet considered a rezoning in the Mount Juliet Planning Region and Urban Growth Boundary. The applicant was Charlie Dean of Dean's Land Group, representing property owner Craig Henninger. The request was to rezone property from R-one Rural Residential to R-three Planned Residential. The property location is roughly one thousand and six Will Road, property map ninety-seven, parcel sixty-seven, consisting of twelve point eight acres, and it went to the city of Mount Juliet last night, and I understand it received a positive recommendation. What this will do, right now on that parcel, there's roughly, it's a grandfathered or non-conforming, I don't know if it's grandfathered, but it's definitely a non-conforming mobile home park that's been there for quite some time, roughly ten structures, ten residential structures on the property, a mixture of double-wide, single-wide, and stick-built homes. It would be proposing to replace those with twenty-two new lots for single-family homes. So, that's just for informational purposes, it will go to the county commission likely in March.
What is the minimum square footage per lot on R-three?
We're not dealt with that.
Just for informational purposes.
Give me just a second.
I don't think it has a ma, a minimum, the, the mo, the maximum is twelve units per acre.
Okay.
So, but they're not getting anywhere near twelve units per acre with their master plan.
R-three's required, they do the same, they get the same seventy-five percent, or twenty-five percent deduction off the top as any development ever had, and R-three also has an additional eight percent that they have to pull off, if it's undeveloped or an open space, some sort of amendment that's required by R-three. So, they miss thirty-three percent of the length of the water, but there's no minimum acre size for a lot.
So, there's a total reconfiguration of the entire property with these?
Yeah, that, right now, it has a private drive going down the middle of it, they're proposing a public road in place of that private drive at county standards with twenty-eight-foot wide curb and gutter section, a cul-de-sac being in, and twenty-two lots off of it.
So, people are living in those tranches now?
I have.
There's not many left.
Yeah, I, I think that whoever's bought it has been slowly reducing the number, yeah, maybe, or reducing the number of people that, when they, when they decide to move, they're not re-renting them.
Okay.
Attrition.
But there's no action required on our part, correct, Tom?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to site plans and plots.
There is a site plan for the LB Foster Precast Concrete Plant Edition, formerly known as Van Husco LLC. This is on the former Hoover Quarry property. There's a concrete plant that has been approved in the past, and they have a, kind of a crane structure coming out of the back of the building there that they're wishing to enclose. So, that's more or less what this is. And staff, site plan meets requirements, staff can recommend approval.
Anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Do we have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, based on staff recommendations.
Second. We have a motion for Ms. Weathers to approve subject to staff recommendations, second by Mr. Woods. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? That motion will carry. Ready for the site plan for the Dollar General on Woods Ferry and one on that?
Yes, sir. We have a new Dollar General site proposed at eighty-one-twenty Highway one oh nine north. It also has road frontage on Woods Ferry. The property will need to be platted prior to building permit being issued, or site plan appro, stamp site plan approval for a building permit, so that it matches site boundaries. With that caveat, staff can recommend approval.
Okay. Anyone here today wishing to speak on this case?
And subject to stormwater comments.
Mr. Dean?
Here, referring to Dollar General, Turner, Rosen, Associates. I think we've done comments from Captain Cowan, and we've got no problem addressing his, his comments, and talked to the road commission yesterday about some improvements on Woods Ferry, so I think everything's good, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I've got a question of curiosity.
Yes, sir.
How many Dollar Generals are in Wilson County?
I don't know.
There's another one on Hartman Drive now.
They take toll, so not much.
Ain't nowhere to put them. Yeah. In my, in my side door, not back door, front door, in my side door, right there. Well, you want to have a hard knock. I like down the store.
Is, is that, is that that location where the water utility office has to be, right there, in that triangle?
I think there's roughly twelve, just in my own head.
That's all?
I think.
I heard eight to ten thousand nationwide, is that right, or is that low?
There may be even closer to fourteen, I forgot about Watertown.
It's low, isn't it? Thirteen thousand nationwide.
Sorry I asked.
It's okay. Do we have anyone here, else here today wishing to speak on this case? Do we have any further questions from our board?
So moved.
I'm gonna say, let's do it, I second it.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Jewell, a second by Mr. Woods. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? That motion will carry. Thank you, sir.
Just for what it's worth, many of the ones in the county unincorporated area are taking advantage of our, what we refer to informally as our busy corner provision that is in our current land use plan that was adopted in two thousand and six. So, and it's based on making sure there's a market there with regard to amount of traffic and amount of rooftops nearby.
Okay. All right, we're now ready for Wright's Landing subdivision?
Um, Glade.
I'm sorry, Tom, I jumped on you. Ready for Glade Park subdivision, I apologize.
Yes.
Thank you.
Staff recommends a one-month deferral as the applicant needs Board of Zoning Appeals approval in order to use, utilize the cluster provisions for the development as it, it's under fifty lots. When they submitted their preliminary, they had, I can't remember how many lots they had initially, but it was, it was more than fifty, yeah, fifty-two lots, so they could do a cluster. They have, they've got wetlands on the property that they've discovered, and it's, and we've also expressed some indications about some drainage issues that are on, particularly on the central and south portions of the property, and they've tried to address those, but in doing so, the number of lots is reduced to thirty-four, and our cluster provision's pretty clear that you've got to have at least fifty lots to, to exercise a cluster provision development, so they've got to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to see if they'll be granted a variance.
So, precedent for that? Precedent for that?
Not that I can think of.
Okay.
You know, it's kind of unfortunate because I think they're trying to do the right thing by moving the lots away from those areas, and in doing so, they're, they're, they've already had to reduce the number of lots from the fifty-two they originally laid out to thirty-four, but if they do not get the deferral, they'll, each of the lots that they create will have to be at least forty thousand square feet in size, and it, it will reduce that thirty-four number even further, so.
Okay.
Because it's a zoning requirement in the cluster provision, they'll, they'll be required to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to request that variance. There's also a hydrology study that stormwater is awaiting, if I understood Mr. Vaden correctly. Site assessment, so we need to defer it for that as well.
Okay. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this today?
Good morning, Joe Haddix, CSTG. Yeah, we would respectfully request a one-month or one-meeting deferral. You can see on the map, you know, the wetland area that came back's approximately fourteen acres, so.
Substantive.
Yeah. We felt, as Tom mentioned, better to stay off of it, preserve that area, so we'll go to BCA next month and hopefully be back in front of you the next, the following day, so.
Have you been in contact with Global Utility?
Yes, sir, met with them yesterday.
Okay, so we've got a couple of lots right over top of the heart of the district.
Yes, sir.
Just track you out.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Any questions from our board? Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to, go ahead, I apologize, Jeff.
Motion to defer to the March meeting?
March twenty-second meeting. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Noakes to defer to the March twenty-second meeting. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion will carry. Now, we're ready for the Wright's Landing subdivision.
The Wright's Landing subdivision is, I believe this revised preliminary that on Besta Road and West Old Murfreesboro Road and Zachary Road, the preliminary consists of two hundred and twenty-two lots. This is zoned R-one with a PUD, planning and development overlay. This is map one forty-two, parcel six and thirty. The plat meets preliminary plat requirements, and staff can recommend approval.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on this case today? Mr. Haddix?
Morning again, Joe Haddix, CSTG. So, this preliminary plat was before you about a year ago, approval is, or close to lapsing, the developer is now ready to commence with construction, I believe we have stormwater approval, we're just bringing it back before you this morning for reapproval, and I can answer any questions y'all may have.
Was there a part of that we required to be sprinkled? I, I think that was part of the conversation.
Yes, yes, that was part of the PUD approval, that the homes had to be sprinkled, because it's like right, you know, three hundred feet, right outside the five-mile radius coming out of the Glade.
Right.
Is that the same plat that some public land was donated out of it, like?
Yes, sir, along the two thirty-one frontage.
You've not donated that as yet, though.
Not, not yet, no.
Thank you, sir. We have anyone here, else here today wishing to speak on this case? Any further questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, Ms. Weathers, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Mr. Turner. All those in favor, vote aye. And those opposed? That motion will carry. Thank you, sir. I think we're down to plots for affirmation, is that correct, Tom?
Yes, we have a re-subdivision of the north side subdivision, lots fourteen and fifteen, consisting of two lots on Ramsey Road, map sixteen E, group A, parcels eight and nine, re-subdivision of the Jonathan Dougdale property, lot seven, consisting of two lots on Callis Road, references map ninety-four, parcel fifteen point fifteen.
Anyone here today wishing to speak on any of these cases? Any questions from our board? Do we have a motion? Some of them. We have a motion for Mr. Jewell to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
A second for Ms. Weathers, all those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? That motion will carry.
Wait, I have one piece of information, we had one item, I can't, hey, Christopher, is the name of, it's Berkshire, it's the plat that was on, yeah, Berkshire Place subdivision was on the agenda in December, and I think was deferred, and we failed to get it on this agenda, and we've talked with the developer, and they've agreed it will be coming on the March agenda, and we will get it on the agenda and have it advertised appropriately, so that people know it's coming on the agenda. We thought it best not to act on it without it being on the advertised agenda.
Was there any preliminary success talks about other, other ways to get in or out?
The last time I spoke with anyone with Kyle Griffin, who was CDSG, they, I know they had been discussing with property owners on Posey Hill who have come in to ask us questions about what it would mean if they granted access, but to my knowledge, they've not had any success there. They have been talking with the road commission about improvements at Beckwith Road near the entrance of Berkshire subdivision, which this property would feed through if, if there is no additional access.
Okay.
But anyways, that should come up at the, at the March meeting, just in the interest of making sure that anybody who has interest in it had adequate and fair shot to see that it was advertised and is on the agenda.
Thank you. At this time, we will open our meeting up to public comment. State law requires us to give people an opportunity to speak, and if we have anyone here wishing to speak about anything on the agenda today, we'll be glad to talk to you. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
If you would state your name for the record, please, sir.
Marvin Lane.
Mr. Marvin Lane, okay.
And I have a farm that's adjacent to the Wright Farm subdivision.
Yes, sir.
And I had a right of way across that farm for fifty, seventy-five, forever, and that's the own, my own access to my property when that, when I bought it. And I put several dump truck loads of ground along it, you know, every winter, so I could get in and out, but then when they, their heart bought the property, he decided to start building houses all over it, and he's ignored my right of way, and every time I would accost him, he tells me, well, we're taking care of it, we, we know you've got Well, we, we know you've got a 50-foot right of way. And that, that's the end of it. It's when I finally pinned him down, when he got back to my property and had a cul-de-sac right, right against mine showing no, no right of way. So I asked him about that, and he said, well, I'll have one of my employees show you where the new right of way is. Now, it's about several hundred yards up in the woods that, you know, there's nowhere in the world I can access it. But he said, that's his answer, you know, to, to my right of way. So I wanted to go on record is, 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 how did someone approve that plat without my right of way showing on it?
I do think that plat was approved by the city of Mount Juliet, if I'm not mistaken, Tom.
The city of Mount Juliet's Regional Planning Commission.
Their, their planning commission. But you have talked to Mr. Bashir and Mr. Lawless, and they are trying to get you the information you need, or at least in touch with the right people, correct?
And I talked to Ms. Hamlin down there yesterday.
Ms. Hamlin of Mount Juliet.
And she, she, I remember she said, no, it was still in the county.
Well, I think the property probably does lie within the county, but it lies within their jurisdiction. Is that correct, Tom?
That's correct. The road commission would have right of way jurisdiction, and the stormwa, our county stormwater would have drainage jurisdiction. So, I mean, we do have some control of it through other agencies, not this body.
Right.
But the planning commi, the planning plats themselves are approved through Mount Juliet. What I've been able to find out today, I am passing down a couple of maps. The blue highlighted one on the first map is, is Mr. Lane's property, as I understand it. You're welcome to confirm that with them if you want, but, and the other one's just a blow-up of kind of his northern property line. I've called Mr. Earhart and spoken with him about this. He's the developer for Reserve at Wright Farms. I've called Mount Juliet twice. I got a recorded final plat for Phase 3 sent to me, but I believe the pertinent information is going to be on the preliminary plat for the development in what's called Phase 4, that Butch has not recorded yet. And what I'm understanding from Butch, keeping in mind that we had no review of this per se in the planning office, is that Phase 4 should stub out or connect a public road to Mr. Lane's northern property boundary, that he would be able to access and, and get out. I also have talked with Brian Keith, the surveyor, as of this morning, and he needs some time to gather some information too. And I, I too spoke with Mr. Lane yesterday and explained to him everything I've just explained to you, and also that I'll be glad to look into it, but I'm going to need a little bit of time to, to, to do up the research. So far, I have found where Mr. Lane purchased a easement from Central Pike to his, what appears to be to his northern property boundary back in the 70s, I, I believe.
Recorded.
It, that, that, that deed is recorded. I don't see any drawings with it. Now, I'm told from the surveyor that there may be a drawing floating around, but I haven't found that yet. So anyways, just know I'm working on it, Mr. Lane. I, I, I don't know that I can tell you that, sit here and tell you that I'm responsible for, and able to fix your problem, but I am trying to get as much information as I can so that I can then turn, turn around and explain what I've found to you, and you can take that information and do with it what you will.
Well, I appreciate your attention to it, and seeing some action on it because it's all of them word of mouth. They never, never was able to get anything in writing. But now when they showed me that plat showing access, I mean, a cul-de-sac off his property and completely ignoring my right of way, I figured it's time to get something on, on, something recorded, you know?
How much, how much profit do you have there, Mr. Lane?
I've got 118 acres.
Really? Yes, sir.
Out there in the middle of all that?
No, it's, it's to the south.
It's ridiculous, Thomas. So this is really not in front of us. It's interesting that-
No, he, he's got a, he's got the right to come and speak to you in the public comments period, which is what he's doing. And that's fine. And, but, the, it's, it's not a plat that you would have reviewed or approved. It would have been the Mount Juliet Regional Planning Commission.
Is it more of a legal issue for him than it is a regulatory issue?
Well, I did suggest that he may have to get an attorney involved, and of course, he didn't, as, as anybody would, you know, kind of retorted back to me that, well, that means I got to spend money and, and to fight this and everything.
He can substantuate his legal position with regulations and requ, and requirements we have, but it will have to be probably law to get satisfaction. Is that what we're saying?
Possibly, if he can't reach agreement. But, but I will say this, and Mr. Earhart is not here. So I will tell you, Mr. Earhart seemed to be, when he talked to me, he seemed to know quite a bit about the situation and seemed to indicate that he's trying his best, he wants to try his best to work with you and work it out. Because he, I mean, I'll even say he told me that his father and your father once worked together at AVCO or something, and, and he didn't want to do anything to harm you. So, for what it's worth, I, I can't speak for him, but he's absent, and I thought I would at least share that.
What concerns me, I guess, is the gist of all of this is that every time he tells me something, it's a different story.
I understand.
And, and I need to get something affirmed, you know, and in writing and vote for the commission and, and action. And then we can at least see, see how we got where we are. But when he told me that my right of way had been moved way up in the roof, several hundred yards from where it is now.
Yes, sir.
Where it was, without my, without even consulting me and being a party to all this. And then when he showed me on the, on the plat that had the cul-de-sac showing about coming back to my, where it shouldn't be a right of way, that it's, it's time to fix it.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate all the work you guys have done. And I know bouncing back and forth between Mount Juliet and, and the county, I'm sure that it come out to a bunch of worms. But I appreciate the help on it, and anything I can do to assist or, or show. And I've got documentation that shows where that right of way used to come all the way across.
I would, I would love to see it, just so I get a better understanding from our phone conversation.
You will see it?
We can wait till, I mean, we can wait until the meeting.
We're about to be through, Mr. Lane. If you want to show them at the meeting, it'll be fine, sir.
Well, I'll do that then, and that's, that's all I got to say about, I guess, the situation. But Mr. Earhart created a situation and, and then tells me a different story every time, and, and tells me that I agreed to some of that, and I never even heard of it.
Yes, sir.
So, so it, it, it's time to let somebody in on it that they can secure some action and, and just get it done, you know? I just, it just scares me to think of what he was, what he was trying to do up there.
Yes, I understand. And I think they'll give you all the information they possibly can, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.[1717.02]